will be given by Tony Miles transforming greatness. The pledge of allegiance will be provided by Commissioner Josh Rogers. Please stand for the indication.
May we bow our heads. Lord have mercy on Bradley County as we repent. Nehemiah one and six says, let your ear now be attentive and your eyes open to hear the prayer of your servant. Psalm fifty-one and four says, against you and you only have we sinned and done what is evil in your sight, so you are right in your verdict and justified when you judge. Deuteronomy five verses nine through ten says, you are a just and jealous God, visiting iniquity of the fathers on the children to the third and fourth generation of those who hate you, but showing steadfast love to thousands of those who love you and keep your commandments. Oh, Lord, Exodus thirty-four and six and seven says, the compassionate and gracious God, slow to anger, abounding in love and faithfulness, forgiving wickedness, rebellion, and sin on all who call upon you. Have mercy, have mercy on us, oh God, according to your unfailing love, according to your great compassion. Blot out our transgression, wash away all iniquities, and cleanse us from sin. Your word says, we are like sheep and have gone astray. Each of us have turned to our own way, and the Lord has laid upon your son, Jesus, the iniquity of us all. Therefore, Lord, take a look at us with your favor and be gracious to us. Your word also says, in wrath, remember mercy. Habakkuk three two. Lord, we thank you for your deliverance. You have forgiven our sin, blot out iniquity, and delivered us from evil and protect us from harm. First Timothy two verses one through three, your word commands. I urge you then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving are made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God our Savior, who wants all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of truth. Thank you, Lord, for these men and women that you have chosen and positioned as our leaders to lead and guide us in Bradley County. Thank you, Lord, for your wisdom that you have bestowed on each of them. First Timothy two two says, pray this way for kings and all who are in authority, so that they can live peacefully and quiet lives marked by godliness and holiness. Let us pray for our elected officials. Mayor Gary Davis, Daniel Beatty, Mike Hughes, Thomas Crye, Louis Alfred, Mylan Blake, Denny Collins, Howard Thompson, Scott Gilbert, Bonnie Bobby Goings, Cindy Slater, Tim Mason, Tommy Leffert, Josh Rogers, and Bill Withers. Since we know that the king's heart is like channels of water in the hand of the Lord, he turns it wherever he wishes, Proverbs twenty-one and one. Guide them, oh Lord, in their decisions and actions, that they might fulfill your purposes and give honor and glory to you. We ask you to give them wisdom from above, that is, first of all, pure, then peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy, and good fruit, impartial, and sincere. That's James three seventeen. Provide righteous, honest, God-fearing leaders and influences, cause them to honor you as the source of their wisdom and power. It is God who judges. He brings one down, he exalts the other. He cuts off the horns of all the wicked, but the horns of the righteous will be lifted up. The word says, he changes times and seasons. He disposes kings and rises up others. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to the discerned. Lord, raise up righteous, wise, and God-fearing people to govern us. Put down the wicked. Cleanse our county government of unrighteous leaders, decisions, and dealings. Expose the darkness and deceit in our county, including all hidden agendas. Ecclesiastic twelve fourteen, for God will bring every deed into judgment, including every hidden thing, whether it is good or evil. In the function, authority, power of Jesus Christ, we stand for righteousness in Bradley County and against evil and corruption. We now pray and agree with the State of Tennessee House Joint Resolution number eight oh three. We recognize that God, as Creator and King of all glory, has both authority to judge and to bless our nations. We, as public servants of Bradley County, Tennessee, seek God's mercy upon our land and beseech him not to redraw, withdraw his hand of blessing from us. We recognize our sins and shortcomings before him and humbly ask his forgiveness. We ask the Lord Jesus to heal our land, remove the violence, human trafficking, addiction, and corruption. We ask the Holy Spirit to fill our halls of government, our classrooms, our places of businesses, our churches, and our homes with peace, love, and joy. In the function, authority, and power and character of Jesus Christ, so be it. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the mayor, I'd like to welcome the mayor of the city of Cleveland. I think, I think might be the first time. Welcome. You're a good person. We love you, man. Also, the candidate for reelection for state representative Kevin Reaper and his wonderful wife are here also with us. We welcome them. The manager of Public Food Store is here, Andrew Dinsmore, I believe, and Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, is here. All the other visitors, we do welcome you. And at the end, we will have another introduction, but that will be at the end of the program. At this time, I'd like to go to the county mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Welcome across town, Mayor Brooks. First of all, I'd like to call in, we have some guests with us from the Tennessee Constables Association, Jacob Thompson and Shannon Gray is here with us to present an award to one of our very own constables, Tim Fowler.
Hello, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Shannon Gray. I'm with the Tennessee Constables Association. I'm the East Division Director. I have a history in law enforcement. I'm also currently serving as a constable in Anderson County, Tennessee. On behalf of the Tennessee Constables Association, I'd like to thank each of you for supporting your local constables here in Bradley County. I hear good things about your support, and we are very appreciative of that. I know it's sometimes difficult to support everyone in their endeavors, but I hear you all are more than supportive, and we appreciate it because this position, the position of constable, is an important, historic, and much-needed position that comes essentially at no cost to the taxpayers in the form of an allocated budget. So we appreciate that. So without any further delay, I'd like to ask Tim Fowler to come forward, if you don't mind, Constable Tim Fowler. Tim, on behalf of the East Division of the Tennessee Constables Association, I'd like to present you with the two thousand twenty-three East Division Constable of the Year. Now, if you have just another moment, I'll hand it over to my counterpart, Jacob Thompson. He's the Secretary Treasurer of the Constables Association, and he will explain to you some, give you some greater detail about how we got here and we chose Tim.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having us. This is a beautiful place to be. I've been in front of county commissions all across the state for various reasons. This is really nice. And Mayor, thank you for allowing us to be here. Constable Fowler started his law enforcement career in nineteen ninety-five with the Knoxville Police Department. He was a reserve there. Over that period of time, twenty-five years of his life have been spent as a full-time law enforcement officer or constable. During that time, he has built a reputation of professionalism, integrity, and very hard work. He always exceeds the expectations, whether that be from the state level or from his constituents or from his fellow constables. We are required to do so much training annually and so much training initially, that minimum doesn't mean anything to him. He goes above and beyond that, and he goes and gets instructor credentials and helps teach other officers, not just constables, but police officers and sheriff's deputies. And he cares about his job. He loves what he does. We quickly realized that he was willing to help with things like that, and we appointed him to our East Division Training Coordinator position, where he faithfully served for three years, until most recently someone else recognized he was as great as we thought he was, and he's become the Deputy Chief at Cleveland State Police Department. So the reasons why we give him this award was for his hard work, dedication, and his contributions while serving as our East Division Training Coordinator. So I just want to tell him, thank you, Tim, for all that you've done to help us. The job that he does is very important in our line of work. Our training records are, they can be subpoenaed, they can go before chief law enforcement officers of different agencies, county commission requests training records, state legislation requests training records. So it's important that we keep those in a manner that is accurate and complete. So he really helped us do that. He really upped the standard that we were before he come along and has instilled things that are still helpful today. So once again, congratulations, and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Jacob and Shannon. Thank you for being here, and congratulations on that award, Tim. A couple of other things, I have a few personnel updates. I know rumors have been abounding lately around here, so I'll give a little credibility to the rumors, maybe. Adam Lewis has officially been appointed as Director of Bradley County EMS. He's been an integral part of the EMS team since April the first, initially stepping in as the interim director. During his tenure, he's demonstrated exceptional leadership, and with the help of the entire team at EMS, and it's truly a team, he has achieved remarkable accomplishments in a short span. In addition to his role as Director, Adam will continue to serve as Assistant to the County Mayor. He will maintain some, but not all of his responsibilities as my assistant, so that he can devote most of his time and continue to focus on leading Bradley County EMS. I'm confident that Adam's continued leadership will drive further advancements as Bradley County EMS, at Bradley County EMS, ensuring the highest level of emergency medical care for our entire community. So congratulations, Adam. Also, I'm happy to announce that Bentley Thomas has agreed to return to Bradley County as our County Planner. Ron Wilson will continue on as the Inspections Director and as the Chief Building Inspector for the county and working with Stormwater also. But Bentley has agreed to come back as our Planner. He has served us well for over ten years before, and he left us to go to greener pastures called T-Dot, found out that grass isn't always greener, so he's probably watching right now. I've told him that already himself. So we're happy to have him come back. I'm thrilled that he'll be resuming his duties as County Planner beginning next Monday. He also, like Adam, will maintain some responsibilities. So at the end of the day, someone's already asked, at the end of the day, I'll have two part-time assistants. But it's all about providing the leadership needed in those two departments and also saving the taxpayers money. Also, Bill McConkey, you've probably, you may have seen Bill, but Bill has begun work as Bradley County as our in-house IT Administrator. Bill worked for Wright Corp. for a while, several years, I believe. You may recall Wright Corp., we had contracted with them for four, five, six years to do our IT work for us. Costs kept going up, and they ended up selling to another company, so we thought it was the right time. And so Bill had been working for Wright Corp., so we were able to scoop him up, and he began last Monday working for us. So we have a full-time employee taking care of IT needs throughout Bradley County. So just wanted to bring you up on those three personnel changes recently, and if anyone has any questions. If not, that's all I have to report this evening.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you very much, Mayor Davis. And we'll now go to the reports from committees and our districts. I remind you to hit the button for the speaker so they can hear us. We'll start on our right with Commissioner Beatty, please.
I haven't got a lot to report today, but I tended to leave graduation, and I'm really proud of them once graduated from it. I think I had a total of twenty-nine graduates. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes is not here. Commissioner Alford, please.
All right, I know Chairman and everything, the Second District's doing well.
That's great. Commissioner Bleak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Tim. Job well done. After that, Mr. Chairman Oswalt and, or, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, and again, congratulations to Mr. Fowler. Also, as an alumni of the University of Tennessee, it's exciting to see one of our own be ascended to the throne. Congratulations, Mike Griffith, President of the Alumni Association, is that correct? That's all. So we can complain about football parking, is that correct? Send that straight to you. Congratulations, Mr. Griffith, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to announce that one of our fine Seventh District constituents, Vince McLaughlin, who's been a tremendous participant in our clubs in this community and also a leader in his own right. He was the first yard on sixty highway that I put a sign in when I ran four terms ago. We'll miss Vince. He was a great guy. I'm proud that EMS with Cleveland State and the county built this contract, there's a tremendous contract for paramedics, and now that contract, as we've discussed, it's time to renew that but also expand it. And the mayor's worked diligently on that, spent a little time there myself, and Cleveland State will be coming within a few meetings to share about that contract with the mayor, and we're really proud of that. There is a growing problem of homeless challenge in the county, according to some of my constituents. We are on the city borderline, and there is movement of our homeless community out into the rural part of Bradley County, and there is a challenge with the state about what's called squatter's rights and what there can be squatting down in personal property or private property. The state is looking at that, and I've had two cases in my district, one actually in my neighborhood where people coming across Candace Creek, we're walking into the backyards of people in my neighborhood. Also, across in Hickory Hills, coming from Cleveland State, there has been homeless individuals that have accosted people that are trying to do a little walk behind their neighborhood. So this is at city area. I'm pleased to announce that our sheriff is very much involved in working on this, and so is our city chief, looking at the rural area as well as the city. We have a growing homeless challenge in this community. We have people that think your home can be a place where they can live in the front yard. We have defecation happening on people's front yards by adults, by thinking that they can come into a yard and do what they would like. So there's got to be some accountability for those that, we spend a lot of time up here talking about private property and property rights, but when it comes to the county, some people think that they can take a farm and use it for their parties late in the evening or whatever. So there is some movement that's coming on there, and we're very fortunate to have the police chief that we have, but also the sheriff that we have, that will respond to what the community is needing, as well as looking what's legal, to protect everybody. So I'm thankful for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Commissioner Gilbert, please.
I also went to the Lee F. Cattabeny, and you talked about pretty cool. There was a lot of kids that had been in trouble, and now they, a lot of them turned their lives around, and family was standing at attention. It was really nice. That's all for me.
Great. Commissioner Thompson, please.
Yes, I want to congratulate our constable to begin with, and one question I want to ask, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask Mayor Brooks if he's got his pass to get in tonight. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Commissioner Goings, please.
The Fifth District's doing well, but I would like to thank the lady for the prayer. I enjoyed that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, in two thousand and nineteen, we had a group of North Lee Elementary students come and present to us an idea that they had about eliminating all of the trucks getting stuck under the underpass on Inman Street. At that time, they were fourth and fifth graders of Jennifer Baldwin's class at North Lee Elementary, so they would be upcoming freshmen and sophomores. Well, the city took their plan to heart, and I was pleasantly surprised to read in the banner this weekend that their system has been approved by T-Dot, and T-Dot awarded the city or the project six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and the idea that those fourth and fifth graders had will come to fruition when Inman Street is opened again. The city or the T-Dot is installing warning lights that will begin to flash, which should greatly minimize the amount of accidents that happen there at the underpass. So hats off to those students. Also, I reported last week that the Growth Plan Study Committee would meet on July the twenty-fourth. That meeting has been moved to August the twenty-second at four P.M. in this room. And let me just remind you that the Road Committee will meet next Wednesday, July thirty-first, at nine A.M. in this room, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bedford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to congratulate Mr. Fowler, and I want to congratulate Adam Lewis for becoming our EMS Director, and I have pushed him hard, and I appreciate the job he has done. I work directly with those gentlemen, men and women of the EMS, and I know what they do, and I know the job they do, and I know the, how Adam has raised their, you know, expectations of their job. You know, everybody, you get a job and you just work, but these guys do a great service for us here in Bradley County. It's very important. I've been up there for many, many years, and I appreciate the job and the morale that Adam has raised for those guys up there. They do well, and they got a big job and a big task to take care of our citizens in Bradley County. So I just, I appreciate him taking that director's job. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have.
Been a great night so far. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to welcome Zach Brooks from Senator Haggerty's office as well, who is here with us today. I look out here, and I'm wondering if I paid my rotary dues or not, like all, just all of you guys lined up together, it's kind of scary, but I do also want to congratulate my, I think, Worldwide Alumni Association over all of the alumni for this University of Tennessee. So very, very cool, and I know it's a big honor for you, but also for the city of Cleveland, Bradley County as well, to have you be here with us. And again, too, congratulations to Constable Fowler, Adam Bentley, and thank you to Ron for his work and what he's done as the Planner over the past few years, and welcome Bentley back as well. And, Mr. Chairman, other than that, I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the agenda items. Agenda item A, Commissioner Josh Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item A tonight is the Menace Road annexation request. In our previous meeting that we had with Building and Land and also about our fire hall, that we hope, that I think, went to the city today, all good, and we had talked about the road out front. It was brought up in the last meeting as well, but during that Building and Land Committee meeting, it was requested and talked about to speak on this during a work session in front of all the commissioners and talk. I know that the mayor has spoken with the city on it a few times as well, from his comments that he's made to us, but we thought that it'd be beneficial to bring to a work session to talk about and to see if the full body of the commission would want to issue a letter to the city, you know, asking for this request, or what might the full commission want to do. Mayor, if you would, maybe speak on this and kind of where we're at from your work.
Yeah, and the discussions about the building swap, that was discussed because it's one of the points that had been brought to my attention on changes that you were proposing. I did ask if they would consider doing that. They left the door open and said they would be happy to look at it. They're going to be annexing our property. They've already annexed the property joining us where the apartments are going, so we're asking that they look at doing the road from sixty-four highway to Powerline Road. However, in addition to that, you're welcome to approve sending a letter from this body asking for the same thing. They have agreed to look at it. They've not said that it would definitely be done, but they've agreed to look at it. I think that's correct terminology, but it wouldn't hurt for you guys to make the same request.
Would you be willing to go ahead and propose that we prepare letters into the city?
Sure. Yeah, I would.
And we'll get that glory when she returns. We'll have her start to work on it. Anyone else have any questions for the mayor on this or Commissioner Rogers? Yes.
I don't have a question so much for our mayor, but I would like to ask a question to the Cleveland mayor, if I may. Since I'm a city resident also, you know, so Mayor Brooks, in your world, if someone, whether it be a property owner, or in this case, it'll be the county commission formally applying for this annexation, and you guys will make that decision, should it not come to fruition, should it be denied, do you guys give an explanation as to why it was turned down, or is it just, you know, put a rejection sign on there, what? I'd just like to know if you reject it, why you did.
If you would, please.
And Mayor Brooks, now you know, if you come to a county commission meeting, you're going to get questioned. You have permission to approach.
You're going to get exposure, Mayor. We're glad to have you.
Exposed to what? First of all, thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for the question and the introduction of my son, who actually outranks me now, representing Senator Haggerty's office, and he, Commissioner Thompson, is the reason I'm here. When you're invited by your son to attend the county commission to honor Constable Fowler, you say yes. So I did, and congratulations, Tim. I know he left, but we're very proud of that. Mr. Blake, yes, there is explanation given.
Okay, that's all I was wondering.
And I'm happy to expound upon that, but the answer is yes. We will provide full explanations, although we very rarely ever say no. We like annexation. It's good to see you all, my friends.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks.
Mr. Thompson, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I want, I want to add while he's here, take advantage of the opportunity. We're not usually opposed to annexation either, unless it has the word referendum in front
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, uh, is that all, Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, um, if you would, give me one second, uh, if we could place that on the August fifth voting session.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll go to communications from the audience, and prior to asking, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Daniel Marlowe to introduce a guest, if he could.
Hey, everybody. So, um, I want to introduce a, a friend of mine today. Um, I have, uh, joined, uh, about two years ago, I joined the American Legion, and I didn't know much about it, um, but I've learned a lot about the American Legion, and it's a great organization. Our county is blessed to have a post, there's many communities that have many, a lot of veterans that don't even have a place to meet, but we have a, a great building there on James Asbury, it's open to the public several nights a week, but, um, I now serve on, on the executive board there, and, uh, the membership elected a new commander, and I'm here to introduce him to you and let you all know that, uh, he and I have had many conversations with, um, members of the community and the Legion about bringing American Legion Post eighty-one into the fabric of this community. Uh, we recently, uh, Mr. Griffith, um, the, uh, congratulations, newly, uh, Tennessee Alumni President, um, we're going to be joining the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce and utilizing their resources to plan fundraisers and community events at the Legion Post, so, uh, Mark Williams, he's a retired First Sergeant, um, he graduate, he's from Georgia originally, uh, joined the Army in nineteen ninety-five, spent over twenty-six years, he served in Fort Bragg, Korea, Germany, back to Bragg, Germany again, Fort Campbell, and, uh, figured out a way to find four tours in Iraq and one tour in Afghanistan. Uh, he's a paratrooper, also, uh, air assault qualified. He's got French, Irish, German, and Chilean jump wings that he's been awarded, um, which means he's exited aircraft with foreign, uh, jump masters and out of foreign aircraft anytime. And he's now, uh, he's married to his wife Christine Williams, and they have four children, Lydia, Nicole, Marcus, and Joshua, and he is our, currently our Bradley Central High School ROTC instructor, and now our American Legion Post eighty-one commander, Mark Williams. I'll let him, uh, let you know about a couple of things he's got on the horizon.
First of all, thank you very much for having me tonight. Uh, again, the American Legion's pretty, pretty big, and what we'd like to do is showcase some of the things we have coming up, uh, especially for the veterans in the community. Again, I just started this, uh, about thirty days ago, so I'm, I'm still learning everything, but I know Americanism and patriotism's are pretty big, especially to the youth. I know at the high school, I teach a lot about it, we get out in the communities, I have historical uniforms and, uh, things like that. Uh, but as far as the post goes, uh, we're just looking for ways to, again, bring some of the younger veterans into, uh, the American Legion, and so they know they have a place to go. So, uh, really, that's, that's all I have, uh, if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for the new commander? Thank you very much, sir, we really appreciate it.
Okay, uh, thank you once again for having me.
Thank you very much. Now, before we again go to anyone, does the city mayor have anything to say or would like to speak? We're not going to put you on the spot, we're just thrilled to have you. Thank you, we're thrilled that you showed up, thank you. And congratulations to your son, that's, um, that's quite a job he's, he has there. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? I'll give you five minutes, if you would like to speak. Going once, twice, three times, no one would like to speak. Next meeting will be the voting session Monday, August the fifth, at seven P.M. here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, Growth Plan Study Committee, and it's been, the date that I have has been changed, so it's Aug- August twenty-second at four P.M. here at the courthouse. Chamber Connect, July the twenty-fifth, four thirty P.M., and we have the Road Committee meeting July thirty-first.